We begin. Call the meeting of July 12th of the Harris Township Board of Supervisors to order, and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance, if you would. The Pledge of Allegiance is a flag of the United States of America. This is the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All for a motion to accept at June 14 minutes.
Second.
Questions? Not hearing any, all in favor, second by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Citizen comment. Members of the public are invited to comment on any item not on the agenda. Comments related to specific items on the agenda should be deferred until that point in the meeting. Anyone wish to... Not hearing any, good. Okay. Township Business Resolution 21-7. Amy or Paul, who wants to kick it off?
I'll let Paul do it.
Paul?
Paul here from the Spring Creek Watershed Commission.
All right, thank you. Let me make sure I got everything set up here properly. It's not working. Oh, I see. Sorry, it was working just a moment ago. So let me... There you go. Huh, okay. I'm sorry, it was working just a moment ago. Sorry about that. Okay, now I've got it. Little technical fun. There we go. There, how's that? All right, problem, first problem solved. Thanks for this opportunity to speak with you tonight. The goal of this presentation is to provide a brief history of the Spring Creek Watershed Commission, to provide a brief update and synopsis of the recently completed Phase Two report, and to outline our future plans in order to gather your comments, feedback, and we trust your endorsement to move forward. I will mention that I've now, this is the fifth municipality I've had the privilege to present to. It's the first time live. I've always done it on Zoom before, so thank you for this opportunity to do it. Before we go on, what is a One Water Plan? It's an innovative and collaborative approach to water resource management whereby municipalities work together in order to maximize benefits, reduce redundancy, and save money. The long-term benefits of such an approach include not only a reliable, high-quality water supply and a sustainable, healthy ecosystem, but also enhanced economic and recreational opportunities that benefit everyone in the watershed. So let's proceed with a brief history of the Commission and the efforts to lay the foundation for just such a plan for the Spring Creek Watershed Commission, why it's needed, who will benefit, and what is necessary in order to move forward and make that a reality. The Spring Creek Watershed covers approximately 175 square miles, has a total population of about 130,000 people, and is highly developed along most of its length. The area is underlaid by a karst geology which supports a huge aquifer system that provides the majority of the water, but ultimately all of that really comes from the sky, it's a finite resource. The Spring Creek Watershed Commission was founded in 1996 to help develop a vision and a plan for the watershed's future. The membership of the Commission consists of elected officials and representatives of 12 of the 14 municipalities in the watershed. This work is also supported by over 30 other stakeholders, including Clearwater Conservancy, Trout Unlimited, and other nonprofits and community organizations, as well as water and wastewater authorities, local businesses, and county, regional, and state agencies. The mission statement of the Spring Creek Watershed Commission can be summarized in three words: vision, leadership, and planning. Specifically, the founding mission was to establish a long-term consensus vision for the watershed and take a leadership role in developing a comprehensive, long-term watershed management plan to advance that vision and to help guide future projects and programs on behalf of the member municipalities. In 2003, the Commission published the Phase One report to help guide development of the watershed and thoroughly analyze the overall environment, including the impact of population growth and land development. This Phase One effort had two primary objectives. The first was to develop a comprehensive matrix of the problems and challenges facing the watershed, as well as potential solutions and future areas for research. The second was to identify and organize the information available on the watershed, particularly in regards to surface and groundwater, the water supply, and land use. In addition, the report began the process of compiling and researching other One Water Plans, and watershed plans, in order to help guide future efforts. Unfortunately, however, after this first report was completed, further progress stalled due to a lack of funds. Nearly 15 years later, and I should mention, thanks in large part to renewed leadership from Denny and others, the Commission started the Phase Two of the watershed plan. Roughly $16,000 in funding was secured, and it was provided by local municipalities and authorities, as well as by Penn State, nonprofits, and local businesses. This funding provided administrative support, including the hiring of a project facilitator. A work group was formed and developed additional background information. They also held several public forums and presentations to gather input from the community. And this effort really highlighted several key issues and concerns. The first was that population growth and land development was not only continuing, but accelerating. In addition, the lack of a comprehensive plan to identify and prioritize the challenges, opportunities, and solutions greatly increased the risk that going forward, the water resources might become insufficient to meet not only the future needs of our community, but also of the ecosystem. This is, of course, complicated by the fact that there are dozens of entities that are responsible for making decisions about land and water. But all of this really clearly underscored the need for a more collaborative and cooperative approach, but it was also abundantly clear that what was not needed was another bureaucratic layer or regulatory framework. But rather, what needed to be developed was a robust partnership between all the stakeholders, including the public. The resulting Phase Two report was approved by the Watershed Commission in December of 2019. It's available on our website, but I can provide the links if you haven't seen it or would like to see that. The key findings are really captured in a revised forward-looking vision statement. The vision for the Spring Creek Watershed is integrated collaborative management of water resources in an environmentally, economically, and socially beneficial manner. This vision emphasizes long-term resilience, reliability, and economic prosperity, as well as the importance of community and stakeholder involvement, but not more regulation nor any effort to change local governance. Instead, improved communication and coordination should lead to significant benefits, including considerable savings by reducing duplication of effort and improving both efficiency and effectiveness. Such cooperation could also be expected to help in securing additional funding from outside grants and other sources. The report emphasizes that in order to make all of this happen, a Phase Three planning effort is needed in order to develop a comprehensive 50-year roadmap for integrated water resource management in the Spring Creek Watershed. With a long-term One Water Plan as our goal, what then are the next steps? Basically, there are two. The first is to get consensus approval from a majority of the participating municipalities that the Commission should move forward with this Phase Three effort. We hope this presentation, while brief, sufficiently describes the goals and benefits of such an undertaking. However, it's important to emphasize that such authorization does not require or imply any funding commitment. As stated in the founding agreement, ongoing support of any commission project is strictly voluntary on the part of each municipality. Upon approval, the Watershed Commission will then move on to step two, which is to appoint a Phase Three work group to guide the next phase of the project. That group will be tasked with the following: to prepare a preliminary project plan and outline; to develop a realistic budget and pursue funding, particularly in light of current challenges posed by the pandemic. Just as an aside, it's estimated that the initial budget may be in the range of $35,000 to $45,000, but as the project develops, that could increase. However, it's expected that most of that funding will come from outside agencies, authorities, and organizations, and well, now by stimulus monies and other things that might become available to move these forward. As soon as feasible, the working group would also assist in contracting a project director and hopefully support staff. Additional responsibilities would include researching other One Water Plans, engaging local, regional, and statewide stakeholders, and providing regular progress reports and presentations, not only to the Commission, but to the member municipalities. And finally, the work group would help in directing the production of that final Phase Three report for consideration by the member municipalities. This will, of course, all be continuously monitored. It will be transparent, and open, and inclusive, and most importantly, it will be collaborative rather than regulatory. So in conclusion, a comprehensive One Water Plan for the Spring Creek Watershed will provide a strategic vision and framework to maintain economic and environmental prosperity and a high quality of life over the long term. Improvements in communication and collaboration are expected to lead to not only improved outcomes, but to considerable savings. But perhaps most importantly, this process will help build a greater sense of community and confidence in our collective future. We ask you to support this effort and consider approval of the non-binding resolution provided as part of the meeting packet. So thank you very much for that opportunity. I'll certainly be happy to answer any questions.
Entertain chair's questions, and we'll go to the groups. Questions of the supervisor?
I'd like to hear from you, since you were, you know, what's your thoughts on it?
Yeah, it felt a little self-conscious preventing it from being... I followed the script pretty closely.
I chaired the Commission for 21 years, so I was involved in Phase One and Phase Two.
I know.
My burnout level at the end of 20...
Well, as you went off, I came on, so...
I know.
I'm not sure I'm up for 21 years, though.
I have no problem with it, I'm fine.
Yeah, my only concern, and you addressed it in your presentation, is I don't think we need to create another regulatory organization. I think if we have guidelines that maybe will steer us when we're making a thing, if we can refer to that, that gets us through the other regulatory agencies, I think that would be a good thing.
Bud?
Although I don't know what you want to do.
To say yes.
What is it that we want to end up doing with the One Water Plan? I think it's, again, bringing the stakeholders together and saying, "These are the things that we all agree are going to help guide this plan, and this is, these are the projects that should be prioritized. These are the frameworks, the best management practices."
You have projects in mind you want to do, you have projects in mind you want to do?
I'm not the expert, I'll be honest, but we do have a lot of folks here that we want to put together and rebuild that Phase Three work group like we did with the Phase Two, working with the folks from Penn State, from state agencies and others, to really build that out and make sure that everybody's concerns are addressed. But again, we have authorities, we have wastewater and water authorities. There's a lot of competing interests here. So I think just putting together a statement of, "These are the things that we care about," and it's not only just because it's regulatory. I mean, I think we've seen that the environmental quality really impacts the economic, you know, base of our community. I mean, I think one of the reasons that a lot of people are moving here is because of all the outdoor opportunities and those kind of things. So taking care of the ecosystem pays benefits, and I think part of it is making that statement in a very clear way, that this is a valuable thing. And there are 12 municipalities that have all or part of the watershed in them, and it's just really, well, 14.
Well, the Spring Creek starts here.
Yeah, right, exactly.
And wave up the road, 13 to 14 tributaries, a little trickle of water, and make them come down through here. And it needs protecting, I agree. Although I don't know what you're going to do yet, to do it, but I guess that's okay. Yes, you'll decide.
Well, actually, what we're doing is we're starting upstream and working our way downstream, it turns out. I mean, we started at Half Moon and New Guys and College and, you know, working our way down to Belphant and Potter and the others. So, yeah, it's tough to know ahead of time exactly what that's going to look like, but we do have some good models. Interestingly, most of them are produced by regulatory agencies rather than cooperating municipalities. So, kind of like the COG, I think it's a unique structure that we're trying to do here. And there's a lot of interest in it, and I actually think it will help this with some of the outside funding. I'm sure you can comment a little bit more on that.
Interesting to say that the daily worth of all the water from our aquifer is about 16 million gallons. That includes the big spring in the Belphant, so most of it comes out of the big springs.
And right now, we're flush with water, but we may not always be. And as things continue to develop, it...
Like, things like, you already established, right, the buffer system? There we are, you established that. So this is the type of thing you're going to look at doing, or?
Yeah, I think so, and then also working together so that that's appropriate in some municipalities, but maybe not in others. But making sure that where things make sense, they, there's some agreement that outlasts the terms that we serve. I mean, that's part of it, too, is to make sure that there's a framework in place that outlasts any of us individually, not only as individual supervisors and councilmen.
Look at the duplication, the repair and buffer is a good example, because we were one of the first to put a repair and buffer program together, and other municipalities have looked at that now.
Yeah, but there's a lot of them that don't do it. Many of them that are included on that map there, actually, not regularly.
There's only two municipalities in the water, so the Arch members are Center Hall and Boggs House.
And each of them only have a couple of acres, I believe.
There's a small corner of the Grant Fairground inside the hall, that's in the shed, so.
Well, we're, and above that, we are part of the Chesapeake Watershed, Chesapeake Bay Watershed, which Spring Creek is...
Right, and that's why Spring Creek feeds into the Susquehanna, you know, feeds into the larger pictures. And there are state One Water Plans that are working on it.
That's, I tell a friend that lives in Chesapeake, every time I take a leak in the stream, he'll see it down there sooner or later.
Well, when the water flows past my property, I'm Mickey's run. If I drive over the fastest guy to keep bridge, it's down there.
Well, I live right above Slab Cabin, so we're on a separate level.
Questions of anyone? Stan? He will, join us at the mic.
Everything identify yourself for the rest of the meeting.
I didn't have a whole lot to say, it was okay. Stan Smith, living O'Call, and I'm at the headwaters of where Spring Creek and Cedar Run join. I just, I'm hoping your Phase Three will allow us citizens to have at least one source to call when we see, I'll call it muddy water coming through, and, you know, try to locate, all these heavy rains, we, I always try to drive upstream, see, you know, maybe there's some construction going on that wasn't properly bailed, or whatever you want to call it. And I have to admit, we get, my wife and I get running around. We call, you know, Clearwater, Trout Unlimited, we try to call one of the reps and state reps, either Williamsport or Clearfield or wherever. So maybe that'll help, you know, your group will help make that easier on all of us. Because we got to keep an eye on...
Certainly, there's a point of contact, sure. I mean, we all have, every municipality has a representative and an alternate, so, you know, if you know where that's coming from.
Right. That's just a point I wanted to make, it's appreciated. Thanks, Stan. Others? Not hearing any, let us move on to the resolution. I would entertain a motion.
Pursue development of One Water.
Second. Second. Questions? All in favor, say the vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Thanks, Paul.
Thank you very much, appreciate it. I will not take up much more space if you don't want... I can't, oh, thank you, but you can't vote, so...
If you want a live meeting, you can stay with us.
Practice up for Thursday. I'll very quietly move my way out, thank you very much.
Resolution 21-18, Amy or Todd?
Mark.
Actually, I'll take that one, Dennis. So the Kwood North Preliminary Subdivision Component Two Planning Module was submitted by Pantera Engineering, and this subdivision for which this was submitted for was conditionally approved by the Board of Supervisors back at your May meeting. The subdivision plan proposes subdividing a 34.07-acre parcel along Andrea Way into 13 residential lots and one open space parcel in compliance with the township's Open Space Rural Clustering Regulations. All lots within this development will be served by on-lot septic, and all lots, with the exception of Lot Number 14, will be served by public water. Primary and secondary absorption areas have been identified for all parcels, and the sewage enforcement officer has approved and signed the module. A lot of times, we bring these modules forward, we don't have any outstanding comments, but I did want to make note that the applicant did include correspondence, as they're required to do, with the Pennsylvania State Historic Preservation Office that stated that this project would... project would adversely impact the Pens Valley and Brush Valley Rural Historic District. The letter from the SHPO provides some potential mitigation options and stated that a final review letter would be provided once a mitigation option was selected by the developer. Based upon that feedback from the state, the Municipal and Regional Planning Agency review forms that both myself and one of my colleagues fill out on behalf of the township indicate that known historical or architectural, archaeological resources will be impacted. After receiving some feedback from the applicant about the issue, we did reach out to DEP to understand whether or not the letter from the state Historic Preservation Office would have any impact on their ability to approve the module. They stated that since the applicant was not receiving any federal or state funding for this project, they would not be required to follow through with the Historic Preservation Office's request for mitigation. They did state that a letter should be included with the module that verifies that state and federal funding was not being used, which has been done. So, understanding that, that this can't be required by the state, we still just want to make the board aware that this was a, a item that was given feedback from the state, there was some potential impacts. But it's our recommendation that the board move to approve Resolution 21-18, the planning module for the Kwood North Preliminary Subdivision Plan, and refer it to the Department of Environmental Protection for review and potential approval.
As to a motion, there was discussion.
I'll move Resolution 21-18.
Second?
Second.
Discussion amongst us? One question I have with respect to the top paragraph on page two, the lots will be served on, on-lot septic?
Yes.
Because we are in the sewage management district area, including Lyndon Hall, will these 12 lots be involved in that process?
Yeah, they'll need to have.
With respect to three-year, three-year pumping and six-year walkover?
Absolutely.
Is that, is that clearly stated on the, the plan or the deeds? Because often, a landowner will move into a situation and say, I didn't know that.
I don't know that it's stated on the deeds, I'm not certain about the plan itself, this is preliminary plans, we could always ask that a note be added to the final plan. I do know the planning module itself calls that out, though, as a requirement.
Is that triggered, then, by the occupant receiving a letter from Senator John Cox saying your system needs to be pumped?
I, I'd have to check in on that, but my understanding is since they have to get a building permit through the code office, they're very well aware that there's going to be a septic system in, in, in existence, and they would then follow up with them about inspections and pumping.
Because these 12 lots do flow into downhill in the Cedar Run, so.
Yes.
Okay, fine. Other questions? Any one for the audience? It's quite a group tonight. Okay, all in favor of that motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Thank you. Okay, Resolution 21 dash 19, Michael, okay?
So, this is for the Pivorato Final Subdivision. Pantera Engineering submitted a Component Two Planning Module, Module for the Pivorato Final Subdivision, which proposes replotting approximately 79.2 acres along Misty Hill Drive and Mountain Road. The plan proposes replotting four residential lots and one non-buildable lot into four lots, all of which will be, which, which will be more than 10 acres in size. All lots will be served by on-lot septic and private wells. Primary and secondary absorption areas have been identified for all parcels. Staff reviewed the module, and we have no significant outstanding comments. We have requested that the module include a letter from the Township SEO stating that the testing conducted by an independent soil scientist was observed in accordance with DEP regulations. This letter should be included with the module before it's sent along to DEP. The Township SEO has approved and signed the module. So, it's our recommendation that the board move to approve Resolution 21-19, the planning module for the Pivorato Final Subdivision Plan, and refer it to the Department of Environmental Protection for review and potential approval.
Motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Questions? An interesting inclusion in the bottom paragraph is that there's an independent soil scientist involved in this. Why in this project and not in the other above it do we have a soil scientist involved? We typically don't see that on a project review.
Well, this is the Kwood North module, and then this, as you can see, is the Pivorato module. They did a lot of extra testing, and they had a soil scientist involved because of the types of soils that they have. So, I think they, they engaged the soil scientists because they have shallow limiting zone issues out there, and Kwood North didn't have that problem. So, it really was just a matter of additional testing needing to be done and engaging extra help to do so.
Thank you, Mark.
Yep.
Questions? Are there any, all in favor of that motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Thank you. Okay, review of Village District Parking Regulations, Amy and whoever?
In 2018, when the Village Commercial District Regulations were drafted, amendments were also made to the off-street parking requirements. These amendments were first identified in the Small Area Plan, a plan which was adopted by the township in 2016, recommended that off-street parking requirements be updated to help ensure that adequate off-street parking is provided and that parking issues can be more easily addressed when a change in use is proposed. Ordinance 332, which was adopted on August 13th, 2018, addressed several issues in the existing off-street parking and loading regulations. Some of these issues were identified in the Small Area Plan while others were recognized over the years during plan reviews. Significant changes to the regulations included: Properties located in the Village Zoning District are able to establish as many parking spaces as can be accommodated based on impervious coverage limitations. The previous off-street parking and loading ordinance limited the number of parking spaces permitted on Village Zone properties to four. This limitation predated the impervious coverage limitations that were adopted several years ago. The width of a standard parking space was reduced from 10 feet to nine feet. This minor reduction allowed for additional parking to be provided on smaller commercial properties. It also reduced impervious coverage. The previous parking requirements for most land uses were based upon the number of employees or a combination of square footage and employees. Since the number of employees at any location can change over time, the amount of parking needed for uses can vary. Employee-based parking requirements can also create issues when a change in use is proposed and a significant amount of parking must be added. Where practical, the new regulations require parking based upon square footage alone. The Institute of Transportation Engineers Parking Manual was utilized to establish the parking ratios. Accessible parking space requirements and standards were added to the zoning ordinance. The amendments apply to properties throughout the township, not just properties in the village. Staff has been contacted twice with questions about parking regulations applicable to the village. In one case, the business is located in the diamond and does not have any off-street parking available to them. The business asked how is parking regulated if the use of the property is proposed to change? In the other case, the owners of a property wanted to sell the lot to someone who wanted to establish a different business on the property and was reportedly having difficulty providing the required parking on the lot. Supervisor Graham asked that we put this item on the agenda tonight and that the board discuss how to remedy these issues. Your staff suggestion would be to send the item to the Planning Commission and have them look at what other municipalities in the state have done to address the first issue where no parking can be located on developed properties. We recognize that we can't be the only municipality with a historic village and lots, and lots that don't have off-street parking. We also feel pretty strongly that there probably can't be a one-size-fits-all approach to the village, as there isn't uniformity amongst the lots and when the village was developed. The goal of the Planning Commission's review would be to establish a better understanding of the issues in the village and some methodology moving forward. And I think everybody here tonight is actually here for parking in the village, so hello, everybody.
This item is not a motion, it's a discussion only, does not require a vote by the supervisor, and the recommendation to move the planning commission. So, we'll take comments from the four of us, and then we'll open it up.
Oh, you want to get one started?
Yep, sorry.
I, I think when we, when we did this, and I, I think we just came off of the Small Area Business Plan, and we took a lot of time to do that, and I think we, we tried to be as, as clear as we could on parking, but I think we didn't look at the understanding of our, of our village and, and the uniqueness of a lot of the properties. So, I, I think that, far as I'm concerned, I think we need to send this back down and have a look at it, see what we can do with it. One of the things I, I think that might help is what we've talked about, now that we have our new maintenance facility, is take the sheds down and put in some municipal-type parking behind the municipal building. And, and I think we're going to have to have some kind of combination of, of allowing businesses to use municipal-type parking lots as part of their requirement. But I, but I think it's something the Planning Commission needs to, to spend some time on, and, and maybe some of the folks here that are going to have comments tonight can comment and go to the Planning Commission and help them, you know, get to where we need to be. So, that's kind of where I'm at with it.
Nigel?
I'll defer at this time.
Bud?
Well, very simple, we have a problem.
Okay.
And we need to remedy it. And the only way to remedy it is eliminate the parking regulations. Whether they were good for 50, 60 years, there was no problem, all of a sudden, there's a problem. I, I suspect that the Planning Commission could look at that, they could, they could rehash it up for six months, come up with some ideas, but we've got to do it tonight, we've got to remedy something tonight. And I suggest we just, just basically waive anything starting tonight, and let's go from there. We can get back to where we were 10 years ago. We, we had, we had, at one point, I think you're allowed to have three parking spots, did we say that behind them or something?
Four.
Four, something like that, but it wasn't mandatory, it wasn't, it wasn't, it was something that you could do to help get customers and put customers behind you. As I said before, Bollesburg's had a parking problem since 1944. When everybody come home from the war and they could afford two cars. So, and it escalated from there. But we've had, we managed it well, I, I didn't see anybody fighting over parking spots or getting shot over parking spots over this 50, 60 years. So, I think that what we could do right now is just suspend all regulations on that until the Planning Commission goes up with it six months from now, and, and we've got three, three people at least here, their businesses depend, four people maybe, their business depend on it, on these regulations, and the good, bad, and otherwise, and I think it's time to do something now.
And both from the group? Over to the table. You're on the last seat, Chris.
Hi, I'm Tracy Moriarty, I'm a resident. I own Duffy Tavern. And, I mean, at this point, I really don't have an issue, but I also recognize that if I ever sell this building and there's a change of use in this building, there is no way, on God's green earth, I can produce 60 parking spaces. And I guess, I have a couple of questions here. First of all, I'm wondering where we went from these minutes from 2018, where it says, we're practical, and clearly, what's in this ordinance is not practical. And I, I'm absolutely disgusted to think that somebody was not reading this ordinance and thinking of the Village District, which is actually right here in this. So, when you look at this, the number of things that the Village District can't do in here is absurd. Between having to pave and driveways are prohibited from intersecting, now, we did review this in this one ordinance coming up here, when it says in new development, but this surely does not say in new development. So, what's going to happen when somebody sells their property and they have a driveway intersecting Main Street? Is it the new one, in new development, or, or is it this one? So, I, I just, I, I'm in shock. I'm absolutely in shock that this would happen. I, I guess, and I'm also in shock that it didn't come to fruition before 2018. So, that being said, now it's at the point where we are hurting people. And I agree with Bud, we can't wait, it's absurd to think that sending this to the Planning Commission is going to get anything done before at least six months' time, whereas you've already had somebody who put her business on the market and had a contract on February 23rd, February 23rd, and this problem has not been resolved, nor has it really been brought to anybody's attention. And I can't really blame the landowner for not really knowing what to do, you know? But in late June, this deal fell through. And that's a long time to try to go along with this. So, that being said, and now you know my disgust, I like this, I agree with Bud, that we have to come up with a resolution right now, and we have to suspend this immediately. And in addition to that, I'm going to add a couple more thoughts. I really don't think there should be any parking restrictions or any dictating of what I need to use my land for, in, in that, I think all parking regulations should be removed. It is, it behooves my business, behooves me to have a certain number of spots on my property for parking. It's good for my business, and it's good for, it's, it's good for everything. Along with Elaine's property, it behooves her to have some, some spaces at her property. Anybody who can have spaces will always have spaces. There's no issue with that, because it is good for our business. It makes sense, think of the Springfield House, what are they going to do, have a bed and breakfast with no parking spaces? That's absurd, okay? So, but having this, oh, you can have, you have to have two for this, four for this, you can have no more than four for this, nobody in any way is ever going to make a parking lot on their property, because we're all, you know, we've got the impervious surface rules. So, you've got that controlling us, we're already controlled. You don't need to control us any further, okay? So, I would like to get rid of all those regulations, and plus the fact that I don't see, I don't see why I'm dictated by the township to have parking on my lot, where another business who happens to not have the ability to have parking is not dictated to. It's discriminatory. And if you think that Patricia's or Pam's, you know, customers don't come and park in my parking lot, they do. It's fine with me, I'm fine sharing, but I don't want to be dictated to either. I don't want to have you dictate a use of my property when it's not equally dictated. I just, you know, if you're going to require one, you need to require another. Now, this leads something to what Jeff Durst said to me, okay, which I found very interesting. He agreed in, you know, taking down those lean twos, the township and creating some, some parking at the township. But his comment went a little further than that, that I was going to still be dictated to, and then Pam was going to be dictated to, that she has to have a certain number of parking spaces, and she has to pay for the upkeep over in the parking lot at the township building. And then, let's see, Patricia has to have, there's just something that came across with Jeff Durst, they, they had talked about, or maybe he had a plan or whatever. I just wanted to squash this right now, because if you start dictating to the businesses and make them pay for this, then why do the residents get to use this, which they will? It's a township. If you want to put parking meters up, but don't dictate to the woman down the way who wants to open the coffee shop, that she has to have parking all the way up the way that none of her customers are ever going to use. So, I just wanted to get that out there right now. I think I'm, I'm pretty much done, but something does have to be done tonight, because now you're hurting people, you're hurting a lot of people now. So, not just sellers of properties, buyers of properties, you're stopping the, moving forward, and you're stopping the ability of somebody to, you know, continue on with their business. So, I would propose you just go ahead and do that.
Can I clarify?
Fine.
I just want to clarify, we do intend, we will be, taking down the pole shed in the back of the township building, and we will be putting parking in there. We're not, however, proposing and have never talked about any kind of parking fee in lieu, which is what I think Jeff was alluding to.
Yes.
Once we put in municipal parking, it's twofold. It's one, we don't have enough parking when we have meetings where we get folks to come to our meetings, so we want to make sure we have parking there. But two, folks in the village can park back there and can use it if they're going to other places, but we have never, ever talked about a parkland, a parkland, parking fee in lieu. So, that's not something, I, I think that's something Jeff might have come up with.
I just wanted to squash that right now.
Yeah, we're going to, we're going to pay for the parking. We're paying for the parking upgrades ourselves, the money is in our budget, so that's not something we're asking folks to do.
Yeah, I think that's about it. So.
Hubler?
Hello, everybody, I'm Dr. Matthew Herdert, I've lived in Bollesburg for 16 years, had a business here for 16 years, was a commissioner for, I don't know, five or something like that. Both my kids were born in my house here in Bollesburg. I don't think I'm generally a complainer, although Amy and Todd might have a different experience of me in that regard. This parking situation and the regulations, the relatively new regulations, in addition to the permeable space regulation, which was more recent, came to my attention a little over a year ago, through a very specific instance where a business owner in the township, in the Village District, who was renting from somebody in the Village District, had cause to move their business. And what these regulations led to, just in this one circumstance, was an option to move into a building across the street to purchase that building. And because of the parking regulations, it effectively drove the cost of that property as a purchaser from around $400,000 to around $460,000, because of the cost of putting in a, in a parking lot, which made that purchase non-viable. But had it been viable, then the building that he was leaving would have been subject, through change of use, to the parking regulations, and that landowner would have had to take down a structure on their building to add additional. and that landowner would have had to take down a structure on their building to add additional parking spaces. So just one business trying to make one move made the, the move impossible for one business that needed to find a place to go and might have to leave the, the village district. And made, created a real problem for these other two business owners. Those people asked me not to mention who they were in the course of this discussion, so I'm, I'm omitting their names from this. So about eight or ten months ago, I started working on an assessment of all the properties in the village district. I walked, I took photos of the front and back. I used various online resources to get the square footage, the value of the property. It's a document that I've been working on. I just, um, moved my primary residence to Main Street to a hundred and ninety-three-year-old building where my business is now operating out of, so that's kind of eaten the last six months. And I tabled this presentation that I was working on. Ironically, I came home from a family reunion yesterday, ready to finish the project because I'd gotten enough done in my building, and we had a power outage, so I wasn't able to complete it. And then today, two of my patients who've heard me talk about these problems called me to let me know that this had been added to the agenda tonight. So I'm not as prepared as I would like to be. But I've been attempting to put together these documents for the benefit of you guys or the planning commission, whoever, that lists every building by address, their square footage, the current number of parking spaces they have, whether they're compliant now with a number of parking spaces that they have to have, the potential number of residential or commercial units on that property, and how many potential parking spaces might be required, the cost involved in creating those parking lots and taking down any structures that would need to, and, I mean, just as it stands now, not even being complete with these calculations, there are a good thirty percent of the properties in the village district that are already in violation of the permeable space or the parking requirements. So it makes it, um, I, just so you know, the, the place I'm in now is residential. It's, I'm living there. I'm operating my business out of it. I'm trying to change it to commercial right now. I'm in that process. If I get approved for commercial, I already have my parking space issue met. So this does not affect me anymore. It has no impact on me anymore. But I'm concerned as a resident, I already know of three businesses that I think would have been lovely to have in the village district that have opted not to come in because of these parking spaces, or were unable to because of the cost of adding the parking spaces. They weren't Barnes and Nobles. They were small, independent businesses that I think would have been lovely to have here. So I do feel as if it's adversely affecting the quality of the village and the community of the village. Um, I personally don't wanna see the alleys of Bollesburg turned into, uh, concrete parking lots. Um, it's hard for me to be sympathetic after twenty years in Los Angeles to people complaining about the parking spaces on the street here. I mean, I understand not everybody's lived in Los Angeles and dealt with the parking issues there. I also understand it's your responsibility to address people who complain about the parking situation. Um, but as it stands, it's a very complex situation. I'm happy to continue working on this document if you guys refer it to the, um, to the planning commission. Uh, but my encouragement would be to, uh, take a hold of Bud's suggestion and, uh, suspend these regulations at this time and send it, if you need to, to meet your responsibilities, to send it back to the planning commission, but with an understanding that this has already had gross impact. There's at least one property in the village that has already lost, uh, two buyers because of these parking regulations. So this is having real-world consequences at this time for people. So, thank you for your time.
Elder? No, Derek?
Oh. Oh, sorry. Hi, I'm Robin Brass. I'm just, I'm a resident of the community, and, um, and I work part-time at a basket full. And I think, um, his point's exactly. We're losing bringing in some small businesses, which I think would add some viability to the community, to support the already existing businesses. And then these regulations seem a little, I haven't read them in depth, but just hearing them, it seems a little overwhelming. And it does really impact the ability to bring in, and it almost, probably not, but it almost gives the, the appearance of the, the township really doesn't want small businesses here. They just want us to turn it into a, a residential area. And I think we have the residents and the, the businesses that add a lot to bringing a lot to the community, and I think a lot of people are proud to be a part of that. And I would love to see us be able to figure out a way to bring those small businesses, like you said, that haven't had a chance to come in or have turned their back on it, which would have added a lot to the community. So, it's just my two cents on it.
Thank you, Rob.
Thank you.
Hi. Um, my name-
Oh, yeah.
My name's Rebecca Elman, and I live in two-two-nine East Main Street. I moved about two years ago from New York City, um, where I was a chef. And I bought, um, this property because it has the most amazing bowl tavern there, built in eighteen oh four. And I had a vision of kind of building a kitchen off the back and using a multi-use space to do events and cooking classes and that sort of thing. And over the past year and a half, I've been working with Todd and Mark, and it's all been about parking. And my initial idea for this space, um, is not feasible because I would need twelve parking spots on my property. My property would not ever be able to hold twelve parking spots. Fine. I've adjusted my business plan and kind of my initial idea to do a home occupation. So a home occupation where I can have a catering kitchen and, um, do some cooking classes on site. To do that, I still need six parking spaces on my property. Um, I have a very small lot, but in order to do that, I'll need to rip up both sides of my property. One is fine, and I can, I can do that easily. The other one, um, is part of Main Street's kind of sidewalk. Well, I'll have to rip it all out, take up my yard with three or four spots, and then put it all back in again, kind of taking away the, you know, historic side yard I have and the historic, um, sidewalk right there. Um, so it, it's also a financial, you know, cost as well for a small business owner that's trying to bring something new and exciting to Bollesburg. So, uh, you know, those are the things I've been dealing with, as a lot of other people have been, um, I know in town. But, yeah, I think I would love to have a change, to make it easier to have this business that I think could really bring a lot to, to the town.
Thank you. From New York to Bollesburg. That's quite a move.
You go that way, don't you?
My daughter lives in New York, so. It's nice to come home, isn't it? Elder?
Um, I would just like to add to what Rebecca just said. Um, I'm Heather Ricker-Gilbert, Heather Dale Ricker-Gilbert. And well, she bought, was actually purchased by my family in nineteen eleven. My mother's, um, Aunt Catherine lived there until the mid, um, of those century. And then miraculously, Becca bought this historic house. And my concern in all of this is historic preservation. And I think it would be tragic for her to have to dig up her yard and put in parking places where her little boy now plays, where she's worked on the garden, where you have a fence, where you have a, a brick, um, sidewalk. I think there ought to be some other solution to preserve that whole property. That's all.
Thank you. Is that it? Ken?
My name is Ken Hall. I've been living and have a business in the village district since nineteen eighty-five. I'm probably, maybe I'm not the oldest person here, but I'm probably the, maybe have the oldest active business here. And Bud is exactly right. We've always had a parking problem in Bollesburg. When I was on the Merchants, uh, Association way back in the late eighties, one of our primary topics all the time was, was parking. But it, but to exactly what Bud said, it worked. I don't know how, but it worked. And we got along. And Bollesburg is a vibrant community. If you, if you want something like Park Forest, you can have that, but it's not gonna be vibrant. We have really talented people in our midst who wanna do really wonderful things in our village district. I personally and my wife Claire live right on, right in the midst of everything, and we love the fact that there's a mix of businesses and residents. It makes it vibrant. It makes it fun. Duffy's down the street. It's just great to live in the village. I think this whole new parking thing, where maybe it's a good idea for Kwood or Park Forest or Liberty Hill or something like that, but not the village. It's, it's a wonderful place, and, and yeah, it's, it has its issues. But like Bud said, it, it, it worked the way it was. And I, I agree with Bud. It, this, this should be, this should just be put to, put to sleep and, and go back to the, to what we had, which, which worked. So, um, yeah, thank you for listening, and I really, really, really hope you consider Bud's idea and, and what, what these people have said. We live here, and we work here, and we are raising families here. And, yeah, this is what we want, and you guys are supposed to be working for us. So I hope you do your due diligence and, and do the right thing. Thank you.
Elder? Not hearing any. What's the favor of the-
This movie. I have, I'm, I'm ready. I, I wanna, uh, make a motion here, formulate a motion. Um, I, when we discussed this village district with Ruth Quarter, who was my second grade teacher, she taught me all I ever needed to know, I'll tell you right now. My second grade, I knew it all. And, uh, and she, her vision was to keep, to change Bollesburg Village District to a mix of shops, nice shops, uh, residential, supports people, setting it a porch, and it worked. Before that, uh, the, the Main Street was sort of, uh, not deteriorating, but it was not a real vibrant place. Shops were closed. Shops were closed. Uh, so her committee devised what they called the village district, and we call it village district. It was a mix of small shops. And that's what we have right now. We have three more that wanna start again. We have a small business, we have a, uh, the, the party place. What's exactly the type of business we want? Uh, the tavern, we want all that. So we want to preserve that. So, and, and I think, and I think we have to do some, it's almost an emergency situation right now. So I'm gonna move that, that, I moved that we suspend ordinance three-thirty-two and then, and let the planning commission, let, suspend that, get back to where we were, uh, be prior to two thousand and whatever this was, eighteen maybe, uh, go back to where we were with that, where you could have three or four spots in your back. Uh, and, and certainly gotta work on paving this. Right now, ordinance says you have to pave, and that, that doesn't make sense to me. So my motion is that we suspend ordinance three-thirty-two and, and send the, let the planning commission stew over this for a while, but that will get us to where we need to be right now. And that, and it, and it worked for fifty, sixty years, so I don't know why it wouldn't continue to work. So I, I'm, I'm making that motion.
Have a second to that motion?
I'll second that motion.
Second that motion? Discussion?
Uh, one, one comment, Denny?
Sure.
I'm not sure. The only thing I would, I would caveat on all this is, we can suspend this ordinance, but if your business is required through the American Disabilities Act to have handicap parking spot or handicap ramps or something like that, we cannot, we don't have the authority to suspend that. So even though we would, we would be able to, you know, relax this ordinance, we cannot relax that. That's, that's further up our, uh, it's out of our pay grade.
It always has been. It always has been, yeah.
So, just a point of order. You can't suspend an ordinance. You have to-
Well, let's see, will we vote on it or not?
No, no, you can't legally suspend the ordinance. You can say you wanna suspend it all you want, but you have to adopt an ordinance doing that. And I would also add, and, and I understand the intent is you wanna suspend in the village because you wanna go back and study the regulations in the village. Totally understand that. Um, I would suggest, though, that you not suspend the parking regulations for the entire township because we do have places where these parking regulations work, the village, commercial district.
Are you sure they work?
Yes, we have not had-
That doesn't mean they didn't work.
But I, but we do have-
Yeah.
It's not a work-not-work issue, it's a suspension issue.
Yeah.
You can't suspend them from one district without suspending them for the township.
Well, I think, I think what I would suggest is that we get on the phone with the solicitor in the morning, and we find out what we need to do. If, if this is your intent and, and that's, you know, your will, if you want to do this, we get on the phone with the solicitor and we find out how you would do this, and if you need to pass an ordinance, we can advertise that for adoption at your August ninth meeting.
Well, did, did somebody make that amendment?
When you say, what kind of amendment are we making?
We caused me to sell a sales floor on my property. I made- If you need to have an emergency meeting, have an emergency meeting. You need to have an emergency public hearing, have an emergency public-
We have to talk with the solicitor to find out how we can, because you can't suspend an ordinance. What I'm saying is under Pennsylvania law, we can't physically do that.
But I guess the thing is, like, when you talk about August, that's, that's not, that's not where we need to be, and that's not really acceptable.
Well, we also, I mean, let me talk with the solicitor tomorrow, and then we also have, if we have to do an ordinance, we have advertising requirements that we have to follow. It's not less than seven or more than thirty days. So there are regulations under the state law-
Seven days is perfect, then.
That tie our hands. But let me talk with the solicitor. I'm not saying anything other than we need to talk with the solicitor to get a legal opinion on how, if this is the will of the board, how to do this.
We have, we have a motion and a second.
Do we have no amendment to that? Anybody?
Well, what, what kind of amendment were you looking for?
Well, I don't know. I'm, I'm asking you, what, any suggestions?
I don't know the amendment. I mean, I, I think that, and if we can't suspend it, can, can we, can we at least say we're not gonna enforce it? I mean, is there something that we can do to, to, I mean, I, I would like to, I, I understand what these people are saying, and I, and I, I wanna get this corrected. But I, I know we've got legal requirements of what we've gotta go through, but I, I can't believe we can't, uh, if, if somebody wants to, for example, the lady that says she, if she comes in with a sale and says that there's a parking requirement in this ordinance, can't we give her a waiver to, to sell her property until we get this resolved? I mean, we've gotta be able to do something.
Well, if you resolve it, and if you go, you have to have another ordinance to resolve it.
If you need, if you can talk with the solicitor tomorrow morning and you have another ordinance that you have to pass in order to, to resolve this and everything, and, and Amy said that it's no, less than seven days, um, to get this through for, you know, the advertising that needs to be done and that kind of thing. I don't know. Maybe I'm speaking for Elaine when I say this, but, uh, I think that that's extremely acceptable because things can continue. If it's gonna be seven days, it's gonna be seven days. But I think a month is, is completely out of hand. I think that's ridiculous because what's gonna go on beyond that? So.
I already lost my business to COVID. I don't need to lose my property and its value on Main Street.
Well, this not, this affects every business on Main Street.
It does. It does.
I knew it, but I'm the one that's for sale right now.
Right now, you're in the middle.
So that, that's what I would propose, um, if that's what needs to be done. But I agree that you have to talk to the solicitor and see what the easiest thing to do is, but seven days is not a bad.
Well, what, what, do we have options, Amy? What, what would be an option here that we can do to, to resolve this and relax it now to get these people to, you know, to, to solve their problems for them? And then I know that it's gonna take a little bit longer to get this, this changed and resolved. Is there something we can do in the interim? I guess that's my question.
Well, I think that's the question we need to ask Pat, the solicitor, because that's the question I don't have the answer to tonight, and I don't wanna give false information or false hope to anybody that wants these regulations suspended, saying, yes, absolutely. I, we need to talk with the solicitor, and I can get on the phone with him first thing in the morning to find out what our options might be. But we also need to make sure that we're doing this the right way, that we're not opening up Pandora's Box in trying to help out folks in the village now, that we don't open up Pandora's Box to other unintended consequences. And that's, I think, what we're concerned about. So I, I will make the phone call first thing, eight o'clock tomorrow morning, when I get to work, to Pat.
No, we, we have a motion and a second.
Yes.
Well, we can either vote on that, and if we vote on it and it splits two, two, the motion is defeated.
Well, I guess my question is-
So, there's another way to handle it. Have the motion and the second withdrawn, and revert back to what Amy's gonna do in the morning.
How would we, if, if you find out at nine o'clock, if you find out at nine o'clock what we can do, how do we do that? Are you gonna email us? Can we do it over the email or some way?
Yeah, what I would propose is, and I'll get on the phone with Pat as soon as I get to work tomorrow. In fact, I'll send him an email after the meeting's over to let him know. Um, and then I will email the board, and if Pat says, okay, this is, these are the steps you need to do, I think you should schedule a meeting because our second meeting is July twenty-eighth, but I think you shouldn't wait that long. I think you should schedule a se, another meeting. We'll let folks know about that, and then have a conversation about what we need to do. You only need twenty-four hours' notice to have another meeting, twenty-four hours in the paper.
So the, the action is, does the person that made the motion and the second want to withdraw that?
Well, I think-
Because-
If it's illegal or ineffective, there's no point in passing the motion.
Pardon?
If it's illegal or ineffective, there's no point in passing the motion.
Wait, it's not, okay, here, here's the issue. Um, it is legal for us to pass this motion. Whether it's defendable in court is a different story. We, we legally, we can pass a motion and then fight it out. Now, if there's another way to do this, then it's expedient, I'm, I'm going to listen to something tomorrow morning, next day, this week, I will listen to that. But it has to, we, tonight, something has to come out at tonight's meeting. But it has, we, tonight, something has to come out tonight's meeting, and not refer to the planning commission for six months' discussion. So, as far as my motion is, I'll change it if we need to change it. We need a motion. We need some, something we can act on tonight. And my motion is that we contact our attorney and find out how we can bring, eliminate the village district from, or separate the village district from ordinance 332 within the ordinance 332.
That's a good motion.
Does the, does the person in the second, you agree with that?
By 8:15 tomorrow morning. 8:17.
Do we have, we have an amended motion and a second?
Is it amended or changed? I don't care. Either way, whichever our secretary says.
Okay.
I think you...
All in favor of that action?
Hold on, just a point of order. So we vote on amendment to the motion?
Yeah, and he made, he made an amendment to the motion.
So we have to vote, vote on the amendment first to the motion, and then vote on the amended motion.
Vote on the original motion first, then the amended motion, right?
No.
No, the other way around.
Vote on the, vote on the amendment, and then vote on the amended motion.
Please don't anybody call for questions. Don't do that.
We're voting now on the amendment.
Well, all right.
Correct? All in favor of the amendment, say the proper thing, aye.
Aye.
Okay.
I just have one more question. As a concerned resident, I really would like to know how this passed to begin with. I, I think this is very important because I was told that this was actually voted on by the planning commission, that's my understanding. And I was told that the planning commission was told how this would affect the village district, and they passed it anyway. They voted to pass this anyway. Now, I understand this protects us from TGI Fridays coming in and plopping themselves on a lot that is inadequate for TGI Fridays to come in and plop themselves on a lot. I understand that, but I just feel like this is, it was so malicious of any group to, to pass this, knowing that this would, this would hurt somebody in the long run terribly. And if you think that you can look around Harris Township, and you're on a board, or you're on a commission, or you're on something, and look at Harris Township and not remember that you have a village district, I mean, I just, I guess I would really like to know, because I don't want this ever to happen again. And I know that when I talked to Bud, he was unaware that this had passed.
Well, I, I was, I will take credit for that. I really didn't understand the ramifications, and probably didn't, I followed maybe, well, Mark, pardon me, Mark, I trusted our planner too well.
Well, I guess that's the problem.
It was all of our fault, it was all of our fault.
I just, I understand that you trusted the planner.
Hi, Mark.
Where's the planner coming with this and not considering a good portion of the township?
Well, it's over, you're right, right?
And it's just something that we need to keep our eyes open for in the future, and I would appreciate that very much.
Diane has something she'd like to say, but she needs to go to the microphone.
I can't, she's there.
Go to that microphone right there.
That one works.
Okay. All right. I was just going to suggest to, to look back at what happened when things are passed, and only a narrow portion of Bollesburg is looked at. These kinds of things occur, okay? But I'm asking for people to look at the big picture. Let me give you an example of when we're talking about something narrow. It was passed that there would be sidewalks in the historic area, okay? And of course, those sidewalks, as you know better than anybody, have to be maintained and have to be shoveled and everything. What they didn't realize was that meant the sidewalks up Academy Street. And they came, the people who helped pass that came back and apologized because they were only thinking of a very narrow area. So all I'm saying is, I would appreciate it if we looked at the greater than just the business area, the houses that butt upright against where the parking is going to be increased, okay? That's all, I just want to say.
No, I totally agree with you, because it does change the entire environment of the village district.
So let's just look at the big picture, that's all.
Okay, we have the amended...
I'd just like to assure everyone here, obviously, I probably all know, I've been on the board when we approved this ordinance a few years ago, and there is nothing malicious about it. I don't believe there's anything malicious about in the planning commission. Of course, nobody's perfect. People don't see all the ramifications of every action that is taken. Now we do. I'm sorry about that. I think we're all sorry about that. And we do not want, we certainly don't want to stifle business opportunities in the municipality, and we'd like to do everything we can to rectify that. But we have constraints, so, you know, please, everybody has to have a little bit of patience. We will work as quickly as possible to rectify this situation. I just wanted to assure you all of that.
Yeah, one thing, Bud alluded to, you know, how this ordinance...
Do we, do we vote on the motion?
We, we got another one to put on, Bud.
We voted on the amended motion.
Anyway, one of the things I want everybody to understand is, when we did this ordinance, where this ordinance came from was about a two- or three-year program for the Small Area Business Plan, where we had community involvement, we had open houses, we had community input, and everybody came away with that plan of what we wanted to do. These ordinances were adopted to try to make that plan a reality. Now, obviously, we, looking hindsight, we could have looked at it a little better, but we looked at a general area. We didn't look at just the village district. So I think that we, we realize now that we need to go back. We were a little more restrictive than we need to. So we just got to figure out how to get you guys, get her property sold, and get the businesses coming in, and how to get this changed. So we're going to have an interim period, and then hopefully at the end, we'll have a period when we're finished. But we will work to get this done, however we got to do to get it done.
Okay, we have, the amended motion passed. We now vote on the original motion.
We voted on the amendment, now we voted on the amended motion.
No, we've already voted on the amended motion.
Now, we voted on the amendment to the motion. We have voted on the amended motion.
Okay. Am I voting yes or no?
Anyway.
Okay. All in favor of the amended motion, say the, say the proper thing, aye.
Aye.
Okay. So we're now at the telephone at 8:00 in the morning.
Yes, I'll talk to Pat.
Talk to Pat.
I'll send an email tonight.
Okay. Okay, good. Let's move on to ordinance 348, the rural zoning update.
We just wanted to give you a brief update on where we are with the rural zoning regulations. The Center Region Planning Commission started their review at their June meeting. They didn't have any questions on the project at that meeting. It's expected that they're going to finish their review at the August meeting. And we're ready now to move forward with advertising for the public hearing and with posting the areas, which is required by the Pennsylvania Municipalities Planning Code. The hearing, the solicitor corrected me, must be advertised twice, and it has to be advertised a week apart, not less than seven nor more than 30 days prior to the public hearing. So I'd like to get that advertised in the next week. And then, we also, Todd and Mark have to go out and post the boundaries that we're changing so that folks know we're going to do this. So we just wanted to make sure that you guys were comfortable and ready to move forward with this. I also did clarify that, since there is still some question about those couple of properties, what you want to do with that zoning designation. If you change what's in the proposed map and the ordinance, he suggested that you would actually have to re-advertise for another public hearing in September to make that legal, and that you also would have to make sure that the methodology, which is in the ordinance, matches whatever you're doing. So just FYI.
Advertising, advertising the second time, it's sort of based upon the definition of significant. You could make minor tweaks.
I asked him specifically if you changed those two properties, and he said you would have to re-advertise.
Why did we do that, Mark?
Well, I think, I mean, I think if you want, my suggestion would be, if you want to take time and discuss it next month, when everything comes back from CRPC, and then have the public hearing in September.
Yeah.
Or the second meeting in...
So once, once we draw them up, we, if we vote on, we have to go through the whole thing to redo the map.
Right.
If we chose to keep that piece of partial agriculture, we have to redo the whole map. So let's decide we're going to do that before we get to...
Yeah, I think you, I, I would suggest, just for the sake of not having to advertise the public hearing twice, that you should talk about it next month, after everything comes back from CRPC, and then you should do the public hearing in September. I don't think there's any harm in that.
So we won't, she won't move, she won't move on the public hearing today?
Well, I moved a table this till next month.
Okay, perfect.
Okay, good, thank you.
I moved it, we need a second and a...
You have a second on the table?
I'll second that.
Yeah, okay. All in favor, all in favor of that table, say the proper thing, aye.
Aye.
Okay, good, thank you. Okay. Ordinance 349, vacating right of way on Montclair Lane.
The Kwood North Estates Plan proposes the extension of Montclair Lane to serve the new lots in their development. Montclair Lane currently ends in a cul-de-sac at Andrea Way. To move forward, the developer has asked the township to vacate its right-of-way along the cul-de-sac on Montclair Lane. The land will then revert back to the developer who owns the property on either side of the cul-de-sac. Solicitor prepared an ordinance vacating the right-of-way. The ordinance, the legal description, and the map are included in the agenda packet. If you're comfortable with the ordinance as presented, we should be directed to advertise a public hearing and possible adoption for August 9.
At your level of comfort?
I will make the motion to direct staff to advertise this public hearing and possible adoption for August 9.
Outside of that?
Question, this, this map we have, the shaded area is our right-of-way?
Yes, right there.
So actually, we're not, we're, they're keeping the road, just eliminating...
Just eliminating the cul-de-sac, yep.
And returning that property back to the property owners?
Yeah, which is the state shop.
On both sides?
Yep.
You got, you got a sheet with that, it has the map, which...
It's right here, which will be attached to you.
You're going to wet enough fingers, that's why.
There it is, okay, okay, good.
Did we give a second on this motion?
Yeah, we did.
Okay.
Discussion, monsters? Anybody in the group?
Is this the one, the lady that said, we got the, you got the comment from the lady about the water?
Yes, actually, Ms. Barbara Hubbard is in the audience enough, she wants to say anything or not.
Did you want to say anything?
Are you good? Oh, come on up.
I may not look old, completely old, but I am old. And the thing I see with boards is people come and go, even though Denny's been here forever, and so has Mr. Graham and Nigel, and you're the new kid, Frank.
I'm the new guy.
But we have an issue with this development that nobody ever remembers, that there's a public water line there that services a property down on Linden Hall Road. And my concern is that as we move forward, that that's kept in mind with the township, with the State College Borough Water Authority, and that I don't get construction runoff, that my line's not cut, that I don't have public water, and I trust all of you. So that's, was my point, and I kind of like the people here. How does this happen, that ordinances are approved, and everybody is on the board, and, you know, everybody does their due diligence, Nigel? I agree, I used to be a State College Borough employee. So it's a big project. It's the beginning of the Spring Creek watershed as well. And, you know, I just expect a lot of you, and I expect a lot of staff, Amy, that you will monitor it because there's a real concern. It's all downstream. And, you know, we, we thank you for your service, but I think as taxpayers and residents, we expect a lot of you. I think we saw it in Surfside, Florida, that there was a big problem, and we don't need that here. I'm not saying that that's the significance that could happen, of course, with life being lost, but we all have responsibilities, and I just ask you to please remember that, you know, there's a little line in the, in the ground, and somebody needs to monitor it, so...
That serves your house and Weaver's home?
No, it serves mine. Poor Mr. Weaver has, he has a well, and he's going to have 12 septic tanks above his well. And there's an artesian well there, which nobody seems to be concerned about. You have Mackey Run with your artesian well down there. You don't get new water. We don't get new water. So...
So the concern is...
But interestingly, there's also, TV cable isn't going to Weaver's property?
Um, it's not active anymore. Yeah, I mean, that hasn't been used for years.
It's going to go in.
Yeah, yeah, it's not used like that.
And it's not still with the ground?
Yeah, oh, yeah.
So the concern is, the septic systems could fail, and split this well, is that what you're saying?
No, the concern is she has a public water line.
My concern is, is my water line and the construction...
What are you worried about, the public water line?
She doesn't want her water line to be damaged by construction.
It was damaged.
Well, if it is, they have to fix it.
Pardon me?
If it, if it's, well, if it, if it's designated by Pennsylvania One Call, and they know where your water line is, if they damage it, they certainly do irresponsible for it.
I appreciate that.
I mean, is that what your concern is? That they damage it?
Of course, yeah, and she's concerned about the runoff, too.
One of the things I can tell you is, I did lose a cul-de-sac on my street, a couple houses down from, my kids grew up, they had a nice cul-de-sac to ride their bus. Now I've got a third street. So I've, I've seen that happen down on Discovery Drive for my neighborhood. I had no issues with water lines, sewer lines, that was all taken care of. The issue came with the traffic, and we, hopefully, we've got that taken care of now. But there was a lot, before the red light went in there, there was a lot of people that would take the shortcut down honeysuckle to go down the road. But we, like I said, since the red light went in, that's happened, but I have had my cul-de-sac removed, and all the services were taken care of. I didn't have to, you know, go say, hey, I lost water, or a power line was cut, or anything like that. So those pretty much are done by the contractor, and they are looked at.
Yeah, and I appreciate the contractor will do a good job.
Yeah, they'll make sure it's right.
It's just a concern that as, as we move forward in the future, that we have a lot of runoff there that are going into, what are they called now? Retention ponds is what I call them, I don't know what they call them anymore, but it's eventually going to go into seaterun if it, if it runs over, so, you know, I, I hope the due diligence of staff and the developer all work together.
You have to do a sewer module study.
They did, you proved, you proved the planning module earlier.
Yeah, we proved all that, and I assume, here we go, assume our engineers know what they're doing. I don't know how we would not know it.
Yeah, that was reviewed by Mary Kay Leopson, our sewage enforcement officer, and by Mark.
We're depend, we're depending on them to tell us that it's right.
We all do, we all do, but thank you for receiving my comment.
Thank you.
And, thank you.
We have a motion and a second, Danny?
Yeah, okay, we have a motion and a second, let's try and think, put things back in order. All in favor of that motion, say the proper thing, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign. Okay, let's go to Mary Elizabeth Culvert issue, Amy or Jerry or...
I'll take it, and Jerry can answer questions if needed. We were notified on June 25, this is not the kind of notification you want, but that the culvert under Mary Elizabeth Street has significant deterioration that has to be corrected within six months.
has to be corrected within six months. The deterioration was found during local bridge inspections, which were done by the Larson Design Group for PennDOT. We met onsite with Larson on July seventh to discuss how best to repair the culvert. There's a four-foot-long section that has a hole in it. The pipe was put in in nineteen seventy-four, and it's deteriorated. So they feel our best option is to pour a concrete substructure around the deteriorated section. That's a twenty-five-foot-long substructure that has to be poured. Their cost estimate is two hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars to handle the issue with the permitting and the engineering included. So to start this process, the township needs to send out an RFP to hire an engineering firm to help us with the hydraulics and to design the repair. We will then put the project out to bid. Both the design and the work itself will be paid for by the township. While the design work is being done, the bridge will be inspected at frequent intervals to ensure the structure isn't further deteriorating. Those inspections will be paid for by PennDOT. We have six months, if we don't get this done in six months, the state will close the road until it's actually fixed, and that's really not an option because that's the thoroughfare to the middle school and out from that neighborhood. So we need you tonight to, to be okay, or to direct staff to put the RFP out for design work. We'll get those proposals back July thirtieth and then have you award that August ninth so we can keep this moving. The bright light in all of this, and the next item on our agenda after this, is that we're getting six hundred and thirty-two thousand dollars from the federal government, and we can, this is eligible for some of that money, if not most of it, so that's the one bright light in all of this.
Motion to move forward with RFP?
I approve that we have to direct staff to get an RFP for the design work on repair of Mary Elizabeth Street.
I'll second that. Uh, who ran the question?
Comment is, it's in the middle, and it's metal the rest of the way. What is the lifespan of the rest of that culvert? I mean, we're looking at, we're looking at fixing one part and going to stress another part?
Mr. Luthridge.
I'm not so sure that, when you spend two hundred and fifty thousand dollars to put a Band-Aid on it, and then how long we have to spend another two hundred and fifty thousand?
So these are all questions that can be answered during the RFP. As you look at the steel arch, on the side of the steel arch, there's pressure and it's kind of buckling inward. And so the result here is to go to that area where it's buckling inward, put a second piece in there, and then apply grout so that that place that's buckling inward now has a larger surface area to absorb that load. So that's the initial input from Larson Design. They did the inspection on behalf of PennDOT, provided us with the reports that said, here's their suggested fix, here's what they think the focus of the RFP should be, and that's how we're proceeding to move forward at this point.
Was the original guestimate, probably the base from four hundred and seventy thousand?
No.
Right.
That was a guestimate on.
There are no documented estimates other than the Larson Design one.
Well, interesting, the county has been very actively involved in bridge replacement and funding some of those. Is there any possibility that the county can help us out with? Because Mike Bloom did a study of every bridge in the county. Was this bridge on that list?
We are going to actually reach out to the county and ask them, and actually, since Mike Bloom is now working at College Township, we were going to ask Mr. Bloom for a little bit of help. But we were going to reach out to the county to see if there might be some funds available to help us cover some of these repairs, because this was not exactly a budgeted expenditure for twenty twenty-one.
Question? Sure, comment? Is this something we want to write a letter to the MPO?
I mean, we could, I don't know what the MPO is going to do.
Well, they allocate funds for bridge repairs, and they do have funds in the budgets for emergency repairs.
If they have funds, I'm, I'm going to knock on doors if I have to.
I'd send a letter to Tom Zilla, or send, send this information to Tom Zilla, and probably copy Eric Bernier.
Okay, I'll do that.
My concern is, and I look at this.
Well, that's why I'm, what Bud's saying, that's why I'm.
Well, he's contacted us all the way across Mary Elizabeth Street.
Yeah, but on the top.
And, and I'm wondering if we're looking at, if there's not a way we can look at why we're doing that, is as integrity the rest of them, because that's apparently only going to be a matter of time before we, we have to really go after this. And then we spent two hundred and fifty thousand dollars to patch it up. Are there other ways to shore that whole thing across, do we, do, who, who do we contact? You?
Yeah, we worked that into the RFP.
Okay.
When we ask, when we move forward with an engineer, we look at the recommended solutions.
What kind of an engineer are you looking at?
A bridge-specific engineer.
Bridge-certified engineer, okay. And I'd like to see his report, I'd like to find out what his recommendation would be for that whole thing, because that's, the whole thing is the same age, and it's just the part that gave away first. That doesn't mean the rest of them is not going to start giving, at, at, months down the road or years down the road, with that crack all the way across the road, kind of, kind of indicates there's, there's more structural problem than this, well, maybe we can see.
Then maybe we can put the partnership together, some of our money, some MPO money, and some county money to generate enough to replace the whole thing.
Yeah.
That, that to me sounds like a reasonable, a better Band-Aid than two hundred and fifty thousand.
Thought. So relative to the road surface, this crack is pretty much under the middle of the road.
Yes.
Not correct? Off to the side.
Off to the side, slightly. Well, I know, I can see that, this crack in the road surface, but when you look at underneath the culvert, at the, the.
Yeah, when you're looking underneath the culvert from upstream to downstream, it's about ten o'clock, ten-thirty.
Yeah, well, no, but as, but as far as the, the roadway goes directly over top of that crack, am I correct?
Yes.
So, but that's where it's getting stressed most from.
That's where it's appearing up here, but that's not where it's showing down here. So I don't know if it's shifting.
But, but still, it's the, it's the, the weight of vehicles in the road that's probably pushing that more than, like, in other words, if nobody, nobody was driving on that, there probably wouldn't even be a crack on it, underneath there. Would, would that be a reasonable assumption?
It's also, it's also been constructed since nineteen seventy-four, so just, the load of the earth on the sides of it is also a load.
I understand, but, and, you know, I, I get the idea that you, you just reinforce that one section with concrete. If you had to do other sections, it just could be added the same, similar way. So it's not like we'd be spending a whole lot of extra money down the road if we, after doing a, a repair job like this. It would just go step by step by step.
Correct. We, I mean, we, it's worth asking the question.
Yeah.
What, what needs to happen now, what's cost-effective to expand the project?
Right.
And what is minimal return on investment, because you don't have that deflection across the full length, you only have it in a localized area.
Right.
So it's worth asking those questions.
Real metals are the same age.
I, I agree, I understand.
Well, I'm, I'm.
But when you look at.
And the same rust.
Eighty percent underneath, eighty percent shows no signs, it's a very localized.
If you look at every one of those seams, they have that white corrosion that's, you know, forming on all the seams, and, and a couple of the ones went across, so my guess is that's where it's the weakest right now, but eventually those other ones are going to be the same way. I mean, you don't reverse corrosion, do you? You haven't figured that out yet?
Well, come up with some ideas.
I think, I think we need to get out of here.
That guy's, that guy's.
How many gallons does that take?
That works, that works on a boat, right?
Yeah, it works on a boat.
With, with your comment, Amy, of getting back to PennDOT in six months, when does that six months start now that we've talked about it? After, after we get the RFP?
No, the RFP that we're putting out for engineering says the whole project has to be done by December, Christmas Eve, December twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-one.
Is that when the six months starts?
Or, or, or ready?
Constructed, constructed.
Has to, has to be done by December?
Yeah, it has to be done. We literally found this out June twenty-fifth with a phone.
That ain't gonna happen.
If, if we can put all the pieces together and do a more complete project, can we delay that six months period?
They're going to continue their inspections, and so I think that's.
Twice a year?
No, no, they're doing it.
Every three months.
Every three months, my God.
We can make three months, so you're not going to cross that bridge anymore.
They, and. Possibility.
That's the thing, and.
Do they recommend a weight limit on the bridge right now?
No.
They have not at this time.
Okay. So you're, we can bring a fire truck up your way, Eric.
If we don't get the project done within the six-month timeframe, they automatically rate the bridge as zero and they close it, which means no one can go up or down.
No, we go to school.
Yeah. And that's a problem, because there's traffic there.
Get the RFP going, and, do we vote on that?
No.
Okay. All in favor of proceeding with the RFP, say the board is saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign.
By the way, I think the six months is starting today, they lower the speed limit on the forty-five.
I like that.
Okay, American Rescue Plan Act money, Amy.
Okay, so earlier this year, Congress passed the American Rescue Plan, which provided relief to local governments. The township is slated to receive six hundred and thirty-two thousand, two hundred and two dollars and four cents. We received our first allocation last week in the amount of three hundred and sixteen thousand, one hundred and one dollars and two cents. We'll get the second allocation next year. Under the law, the money can be used for the following items: replacement of lost revenue from the virus, water, sewer and broadband infrastructure projects, which this culvert issue falls under the water sewer issue, responding to the negative impacts from the virus, including providing grants to small businesses or nonprofits, and to respond to workers providing essential services during the pandemic. The money must be obligated by the end of twenty twenty-four, with all money being spent by twenty twenty-six. I put together a document that explains the uses allowed under the order, and also kind of goes into a little more detail about what's actually in the order itself. And then Dwight, our finance manager, is here to discuss the lost revenue calculations that he did, to answer any questions you may have on that. We have time to spend this money, so it's not something we need to worry about tonight, it's not something we need to decide next week, other than we probably should think about spending some of this money on the Mary Elizabeth issue. So we can take a slow and steady approach, we can talk about this over as many months as you want, but we just wanted to start the conversation tonight. I also do think that, just like our friends in Patton Township did, I think we should probably ask our boards and commissions, board and commissions, if they have some suggestions of projects.
My first question is, how the hell do we qualify for six hundred thousand dollars? And where did that money come from? I already know the second, first second question, but little township, little township like this for six hundred thou, what does some of these other townships getting?
So.
Equivalent?
Burrow, Burrow received twelve point nine million. Now, Burrow is a direct allocation because of the CPG qualifications.
So where ten percent of the center region, that means the center region must have got ten times off. What, I don't, I don't get it. But we'll spend it, don't worry.
That's, that's.
You want to add something to the discussion?
Amy asked me to explain the lost revenue calculation, so I'd be happy to do that. So the, the, the base year for the calculation is twenty nineteen, the year before the pandemic. And what the federal government want to do is to come up with a formula to calculate potentially how much revenue a municipality lost because of the pandemic. And they came up with a formula, which is the greater of four point one percent increase over the base year, so twenty nineteen plus four point one, or the three preceding-year average, which would be sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, average those up, and you compare that to your base year. So if, if a municipality had greater than four point one percent increase, in the, in that calculation, you got the greater of the two. In your case, in your calculation, the municipality wasn't growing at an average rate greater than four point one, so you get the four point one. So I, I did the calculations based off the DCED reports, calculated sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, averaged that, compared that to nineteen. You had a three percent increase between that average and nineteen. So you get to take nineteen, apply four point one to it, and then you take the actual from twenty and subtract the difference, and that's your lost revenue. In your, your case, you actually did in twenty better than you did in twenty nineteen, despite the pandemic. And it, this is calculated on what's called entity-wide, so it includes everything you do, not just the general fund. So liquid fuels, everything is thrown in there, the light fund, all your funds are all just thrown in together, and it has to be calculated on what's called an entity-wide basis. So it's, it's, it's based on all of the revenue. So if you had ups and downs between the different funds, that all gets thrown into the bucket.
We heard a steady increase in the real estate transfer tax, all, all those years.
Yes.
So our, if our income was two and a half million in eighteen or nineteen?
Yeah, there's some stuff that's excluded, the borrowing's excluded, the health insurance refunds are excluded, so it comes about two point one million is the eligible revenue.
So we didn't come with two point one million, and you added four percent.
Four point one percent, and then you compare that with what you actually did during the pandemic, which.
We did better.
You did better than you did in the, in the base year.
So where did you get more money?
You answered your own question.
So your, your lost revenue wasn't, wasn't really that great.
No.
So is that number different than what you said?
It is.
Okay.
Because there was an error in that, there was an error in that spreadsheet that it's going to be lower.
You're, you're the.
What do you think of Amy's idea of asking the ABCs with respect to the same model that Patton is using?
That's really up to how you want to use that money. The borough is going to be using it in, in those various pieces. The lost revenue, the borough's going to use to fund operations for a chunk of that, they're going to take a chunk of it and use it for stormwater and sanitary sewer, and then there's going to be a chunk that's going to be dedicated to economic development.
And in addition, we've had what I would call a wishlist of things that we'd, we'd like to do. Maybe we should ask our fellow supervisors to, to give some thought, write those down, get them to Amy, don't put a dollar value on them, just, just a list of, of something you'd like to see or think about.
Yeah, the, the only caveat I would put on that is make sure you limit that list to the eligible things.
Yes.
Well, yeah.
The non-revenue money is very narrowly focused. It's sewer, water, infrastructure, and, and really economic development for you. There, there's a chunk of the money that talks about responding to the pandemic, and that's people who put up health services and emergency responders and doctors and nurses. You don't really do any of that, so that's really kind of off.
Well, it may take you to consulting.
Yeah.
And say, that item doesn't qualify, but that one does.
But it, it might help if you have a little bit of that guideline.
Yeah.
As you put your wishlist together, so.
Somebody's going to audit this, I'm sure.
Oh yeah, Treasury's going to audit every bit of it.
Federal government's going to audit us.
And it can be.
Federal government, huh?
It can be deposited in an interest account.
It can be, yes, it should be.
We put it in interest.
Yeah, it should be.
We don't have to pay them back the interest, though. We, we get to keep the interest.
Originally, there was rumor that you didn't have to pay the interest back.
Yeah, we don't have to.
Yeah.
So you, you have a document that I put together, I have this notebook here, it's the order in it, and I've been going through and highlighting everything, and I created a document out of that. So following on Denny's suggestion, maybe looking at this document, if you want to come up with some items, and then when I see the Parks and Rec Committee next month, and I see the Shade Tree Commission and even the Planning Commission, I'll ask them same thing, if they want to go through an exercise and come up with some ideas.
We then need to retrieve from the fire department?
I have that.
Lost revenue to your loss?
I have that information.
And the Heritage Museum?
I have the information for the conservancy for Memorial Day.
Okay, okay, because we had talked about.
Yeah, the caveat on the nonprofits is that in the order, it says they have to be a five oh one C three. So I know the fire company is, I'm pretty sure the conservancy is, I don't know if the Heritage Museum is, are they?
Heritage Museum is.
Okay.
So get some thought, there's some list, send them to Amy, and she and Dwight can, can pigeonhole and make sure they qualify.
Sure. One of the areas that I know the federal government focused on in that infrastructure piece is high-speed internet. So if you have thoughts about something related to high-speed internet, that qualifies as well.
In a case like that, because the county is talking about the same thing, how do we avoid the duplication of what the county wants to do on high internet versus what we may want to do in neighborhoods? Who puts that puzzle together?
So my thought process was that we go to Margaret Gray at the county and say, if you're going to do a regional project, because I've had contact with residents that live out in Shingle Town that don't have high-speed internet that would like it, so we have some unserved pockets. So if the county's going to do a countywide project, we would pay into that project, let them manage it.
Yeah, okay.
We would use our allocation to pay in to help expand that.
Allow Lemon to do the study.
Yes.
Okay, okay, good.
I suggested a parking deck.
Oh my gosh.
Get something to, get something, Amy, then. On this purple sheet, Dwight, is there anything that we need to?
Six months.
Talk about?
I don't think so, I think you're very well on track right now.
That's the year-to-date funding thing?
Yep, the, I've been tracking the earned income tax, and it's about where you'd expect to be.
Okay.
It's coming back from what it was in, in twenty twenty during the pandemic. When you look at the first six months, year-to-date versus twenty nineteen, which would have been your base year, you're, you're a little bit below, but you're on track to, to achieve what I would expect the year after a pandemic, as businesses are coming back up.
And real estate transfer tax is doing well again.
Yes.
You never know.
Eighty-eight percent of, of what we anticipated and stuff.
Yeah.
With, with the projects on the market now.
Look, did you say, what did you say about already?
It's coming back as you would expect it to. It's, you're, you're actually, you're ahead of last year, but, but a little bit behind twenty nineteen.
It caught up to the end of last year, pretty much.
It was still down. It caught up to what we budgeted, but we were conservative when we budgeted, but it was down from twenty nineteen.
Okay.
And we were conservative in, in when we did the budget.
Other questions of Dwight? In the number of questions? Thanks, Dwight.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Dwight.
Okay. Request to use Bollesburg Fire Police.
Tussie Mountain is requesting the use of the Bollesburg Fire Police to assist with traffic control for their Wing Fest events. Specifically, they're requesting their usage on Thursdays from July fifteenth to August twelfth, from four forty-five PM to nine PM each night. And I would add that this is just for traffic control in their parking lot. State College Police are providing traffic control at the Bear Meadows intersection.
Good, good. I feel uncomfortable with our fire police at three twenty-two.
What are you trying to say?
I don't, I don't want them on three twenty-two. It's too dangerous.
I'll move the motion.
Second?
I'll second.
Discussion? Not hearing any. All in favor, say the book is saying aye. Aye. Both, same sign. Okay, managers report, Amy?
Okay, just a couple of things to highlight. I got a call from Scott's Landscaping to see if the township wanted to renew our snow removal contract with Liberty Hill. If you remember, last year, we were down a man due to a person who was on medical leave. So we contracted with Liberty Hill, with Scott's Landscaping, just to take care of Liberty Hill's snow removal. We still salted in there and coordinated with them. We're back at full strength, so staff would recommend that we not continue that contract and continue going back to what we did before, which was, we contract, we worked very well with Scott's Landscaping, of course.
I'd speak against that. It did, it worked well, we outsourced that, we don't have to worry about Liberty Hill, we don't have to worry about coordinating with Scott Landscape. We got no, we got no complaints from people at Liberty Hill. It worked wonderfully, and it saved, eventually will save us purchasing a truck and hiring another person, which is several hundred thousand dollars. So I think that by letting them, and, and I don't, and I don't know that Liberty Hill people have any problem with that either, they like that idea. So I think we'd like, I'd like to pursue it, see what he charges and see what he costs. Just because we can do it doesn't mean it's a smart idea.
Do you want me to put this on the agenda for August night?
Well, I, I think it saves us money, it saves us, it saves us a lot of work.
And then I can invite Mr. Adam to come.
Give us some, give us some numbers, little cap.
Yeah. I mean, I, I mentioned this two years ago, and it was a, it was more of a, of a pride thing at that time, I think, so you, we can't take our work away from us, but I think it's smart that sources.
Okay, Adam, for Amy, the.
Oh, the township dinner, yeah. I talked to Mountain View, November fifth and October twenty-ninth are available. We do better with the appreciation dinner when we have it on a Friday night in November or October. I would say you go November fifth first. So if you're okay with that, I'll get that booked.
I'm fine with November five. Discussion?
I'm fine with you.
It's a way football weekend.
I'd like to see it back here again. I think we're having more fun, enjoyable, people associated, socialized more, it was cheaper.
No, there were, there were issues with.
What issues?
The bartending issue.
It was cheaper, by the way. I think it was cheaper up there, bud.
There was no issue.
When you look at, when you look at, when you look at staff's time, it was cheaper up there.
It was not. He told you that.
I saw the numbers.
Well, who made the numbers, the staff?
We get reports.
Okay, November five, sounds good.
At Mountain View.
Mountain View.
Okay. And then I have on here, because Mr. Harden keeps bringing this up to me, about having an open house at the maintenance facility. However, the maintenance crew pointed out to me today that we need to get their lockers and their sign put in first, so we're gonna push that in.
Get the grass to grow.
Yeah, we'll push that into the fall when things are looking very well out there, and then we'll plan something. I like the idea of doing a Saturday morning event, and we can have some trucks out and little kids can come and see the trucks.
That, that would get us times, all get real nice golf, Harris County shirts for everybody that we stand out when we're sitting there, why not?
You're not doing that, that's not a thing.
I'll, I'll get you one. Frank, I got a bunch of leftover golfers, so make some up for you.
What's that?
We can take a, we can take the kids.
Well, we need to get, yeah, the sign's not up, we need to get the sign.
The sign in the, the lockers, so we'll do something in, later in the fall on a non.
And when our locker license comes through, we have to get that approved.
Oh my God, stop. Stop.
One final item, I'd like to see us begin thinking about a plan for the removal of the old maintenance property, and if that involves Jerry and the engineering people as to how to do it, who should do it, when it needs to be done. Let's get it done before.
Lean to it.
Oh my God.
It'll fall down first.
If it falls down, we gotta pick it up. Doesn't make any difference, it's gotta be moved.
Yes.
Before the leaves fall and the snow plows, can we get some thought to get that thing clear, because it's sitting there and it's, it's a hazard.
Yep.
It is a hazard.
I think it probably has value to someone if you just find the right person.
Yes, that is the next thing on my.
That looked good over there, down by the.
No, no, it wouldn't be.
Does the fire company, company need any training?
Oh my gosh, no, they're not burning that down in the middle of the village. You want, you want to see what, how packed this room is when you burn that down in the middle of the village?
Let's work on that.
We already had one fire, that was enough here, right? That was enough fire up there, wasn't it?
Jeez, no more. Just one thing, do you want to do an executive session when we're done here to talk about that personnel?
Oh yeah, I would, I would do that.
Yeah, yeah. Other questions on the managers report? Not hearing any. Approval voucher, someone move.
I'll make the motion that we approve voucher number twenty twenty-one dash six for three hundred and fourteen thousand, two hundred and fifty-six dollars and seventy-six cents.
Second?
I will.
All in favor, say the book is saying aye. Aye. Both, same sign. Okay, committee, cog committee report. Executive committee, I was out on vacation, I did not attend. The public service committee did not meet in July. The solar power purchasing, the RFP generated five replies. They've looked at all of those, and they're going to be doing interviews with two. And that will be done by the end of July, with a recommendation coming to the full committee, probably second week in August. So it's moving along. They've also changed the cost allocation. Our, our cost on the RFP is three, is two hundred and forty-three dollars. It went, went up like five or six bucks, so no big deal. Okay, human resources, Mr. Wilson.
We did not meet this month.
Good, we're moving along. Finance, Mr. Graham.
I, I was, almost attended it, but I was away, but I didn't, somehow something happened, I just couldn't see it. But what was discussed was, the cog program plan will be out, it was, it was, it was recommended, we sent, we sent the, at the General Forum, we do the same thing we do every year, presented the program plan back to the Spies Review, and it's back to, back to, by August nineteenth, back to Executive Director, and then the, the planning committee will begin looking at it. August meeting days changed because of that. IT study, I'm not sure we're still studying it to death. And what, what, we rejected all proposals, I guess, and can you tell us why, what happened there?
The proposals were way out of the price range.
Down the price range, okay.
You know, around three times what was budgeted.
I, I, I missed that discussion, but I assume that's what happened there.
What, what did they budget on that?
Twenty-five thousand.
Came in at seventy-five.
Yeah. Okay, and Millbrook Marsh, they, they elected to take option number three, which is probably one, it almost is four, except not as expensive. It, it's, the three and four are pretty much the same, one and two are just more or less hybrids of that, but that, they go to number three, and the, will be a nine hundred and thirty-two thousand dollar budget for that. I think some of that money's already been donated, that they've got some money coming in for that.
That's the second building, you mean?
That's, no, that's, that's the repair, repair of the boardwalk.
Oh, oh, okay.
That's to repair the boardwalk.
There's more to that.
Probably sinking into the marsh.
A lot of money.
That's a lot of money, but, well, it is a lot of money, but they're gonna do a lot more things. They're gonna widen it, there's gonna be, there's gonna be four, one, five sections, they're gonna build a connector loop, so you walk all the way around it, and I was surprised to find out how much use that dang thing gets down there, just amazing. The city, the, the schools and everybody, Penn State students, they, they use, there's a certain part of that that they just, there's, you're not getting place else around here, inside the marsh.
A lot of that first bridge was done with volunteer work?
It was the volunteer work, yeah, that's probably what.
Right, boy, your group of friends dug all those holes in the marsh.
They dug, and it was, it was on bad, bad footing. Okay, I think that's about all. Library funding formula, I think they're gonna keep that the same. They talked about trying to change it a little bit, but they had digital checkouts, but digital checkouts aren't that much more. So library funding will be the same per usage, per checkout. They take the, take the library budget and divide it by how much they've checked out, and Harris Township checks out a lot more than, than other townships do, which is very surprising. We read a lot, I guess, down here. That's, that's about it.
Museum?
Museum is open Saturdays. The, the, the display now will be for about a year, it's by Dr. Nydeger and his wife, Nydeger, and Mrs., Ms. Weaver.
Yeah.
And it has to do with outbuildings. Now, you're gonna think outbuildings is outbuildings, but it has to do with ice, ice buildings, they're on the lots on, on old farms, they, they bought, stored ice, they had outhouses. I think we're gonna buy an outhouse to put over there, and I volunteered not to dig the hole. So it's interesting, it's about, they, they, if you get a chance, walk there Saturday afternoons, or fun, and they ship them over to China, a place like that. But anyhow, it's, it's, it's interesting. We love remodeling down there, come and set the front porch wherever you want to do. That's it.
Thank you. Mr. Harden, transportation facilities and the P E L study.
Well, transportation, we didn't meet, which is our.
Okay.
MPO, we met, basically, we had a presentation by the Clylin Action Sustainable Building